Mr. Anker, will you do the roll call, please? Mayor Steen.
Present.
Councilmember Alarge Anderson.
Present.
Councilmember King.
Present.
Austin.
Present.
Jordan.
Present.
Bauten.
Present.
Carolyn.
Present.
Enright.
Present.
We have a call, Your Honor.
Item one is a motion for adopting the agenda. We are striking number five and adding number thirty-three. With those additions and subtractions, we need a motion. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Item two is a motion for approval of the minutes of March seventeenth, two thousand fourteen. We need a motion?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay, I see there's a lot of citizens here tonight, and if you're here for things that are on tonight's agenda, this doesn't pertain to you, but is there anybody here that wants to address the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda? Come on, Matt. We'll let him go first, Dick. I didn't see you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. For about ten years or so in this city council, I would hear a lot of "I, I, I" votes for anything that seems to benefit the Hormo company and private banks. And from the city council for years, I would also hear a lot of "I, I, I" votes generally against Austin's ninety-nine percent of citizens that put Austin citizens into debt to private banks. This city government for ten years seems to ignore the Hormo swamping Austin with up to two thousand illegals or whatever at a time. And also seems like votes tons of citizens into tens of millions of taxes and debts owed to private banks. Many times I've talked with city engineer Erickson, who supported millions of public money going to like the airport so that private Hormos company could land their private debt. Now millions of public money are spent on an ugly dyke system along North Main Street to protect Keane Motors and I guess the Hormo spam museum. Well, Hormos continues to stink up Main Street and the library and my street against the Clean Air Act. And also there's, it used to be blocks of homes that got moved out of the floodplain, but why not Keane Motors? And anyway, seems like thanks to an anti-citizen government, Hormos swamped Austin with illegals, and yet one of my neighbors for sure hates being unemployed for two years.
Mayor, I ask special citizens' privilege. For inappropriate remarks being made to this city and this council, I ask him to be quiet.
Do I have the floor or does this question go? Do I have the floor or is he on the floor?
He wanted to say you were at my doorstep again in the middle of night knocking on my door to get my attention.
Never, never. I don't know, you're nuts or something. I never did so.
Well, we're not gonna have name calling, Matt.
One of my neighbors is unemployed for two or more years and has two kids and gets only fifteen dollars a week welfare check showed it to me. And then yet the HRA promotes tons more cheap foreign labor for Hormo company.
Matt, you're kinda rattling on. You've had too many.
Okay, well.
We've got a big crowd here tonight.
I see that. Anyway, I just thought I'd mention some of this because it seems like a lot of citizens seem to be being betrayed by the city government, and I object.
Thank you, Matt. Anybody else? Dick, did you want?
I just have a question, Your Honor. I was under the impression by newspaper that the so-called emblem.
The logo.
Was gonna be on the agenda tonight, and I do not see it.
Work session.
That's not the way they stated it.
Well, it is on the work session agenda.
What we'll do, I know there's a lot of people here for the logo, what we'll do is...
No, I was just wondering. That's what my understanding was, so.
Soon as we finish the council meeting, we'll stay in here for the next two items, and one of them will be the logo.
Okay. No, I was just wondering. It was misprinted, anyway.
Okay. I didn't see it, so I couldn't tell you. Anybody else?
Yes. Eugene. I'd like to address the council.
You need to give us your name and where you live.
My name is Gene Novak, and I live at sixteen-eleven Fourth Avenue, north southeast. And I'm here to address the council on the street sweeping. I've never seen, I've been at this maybe two years about street sweeping. When they sweep the streets and everything, when they go by the homes on Fourth Avenue and stuff and all over the city, you can't even see my house. Now, that's ridiculous.
Is it dust?
Dust, yeah, and dust. And my wife herself said, you clean the house, you wanna, right now you wanna have your windows open because hey, everybody knows what winter was like this time, and we wanna get some fresh air. And holy, here it came. And I went after the guy driving it, not that it's his fault, I just went and asked him. And Randy, I can't remember his last, but I think he's under Steve there. Do you know his last name, Steve?
Uh, no. Not, not. It doesn't matter.
Okay, whatever. I got a whole, and he came to my home, and I discussed these things, and I have to give credit for one thing. Like this Steve said to me, Gene, he said, one of the reasons, I said, where's the water? Where's the water? You got a hydrant over here, you got hydrants down there? Where's the water to put in there? And as I say, it wasn't all bad because like he had said to me, you know what? He said, if we put water down right now, he said it'll freeze, which would, made sense. But he said, and the other deal was that Steve had said, you gotta get those sweepers out there because, and that too I understand now, is because even myself, I have a motor scooter. And the saw, the, uh, uh...
Sand?
Sand, thank you very much. The sand that they put on, isn't necessary to put a ton of sand on these streets? Albert Lee, if you go to Albert Lee, you're not running into that. I have a brother-in-law over there, and I look this over stuff, and you don't put near the sand and stuff on their streets as we do. And like they said, and I can see that point too, that if they don't get that sand out of there, like I, like I said, running motor scooters, motorcycles, that you could have a very, very bad accident and things like that. So what I'm asking is this, if we need new brushes or if we need new sweepers and that, the city seems to buy most, a lot of other things than that, what would it be to trade, like we trade fire trucks off or stuff like that? What would it be to get us, you know, and put the three maybe new street sweepers or something? Something that's gonna work for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Gene. Okay, is there anybody else? If not, we will move to...
I just wanted to add something to what Gene said. My name is Rodney Frederick, and on the situation on the sand, I've gone to Rochester and I've gone to, over to Albert Lee, and they don't seem to have the sand on the street like Austin does. And I don't know if we're, what we're doing or what they're doing different. And I mean, why all the sand when the other towns don't have it? I don't know if they sweep it up faster than we do or just what, have you ever checked on what they do during the winter instead of putting all the sand down like we have in, in Austin here? I mean, you drive down some of these streets, and it's awful. You got a wind row of sand down the middle of the street, it's on the edge of the street, the gutters, it's on the boulevard, and it's, I mean, it's on the curb, and it's up into the grass on the boulevard.
Yeah, I have a motorcycle myself, and it's, it's, there's a lot of sand, but we had a really bad winter too, so.
Right, and what are these other towns...
I was glad when they put it down.
What are these other towns doing that they don't seem to have all the sand that we've got?
No, I couldn't answer you. You know, maybe...
Has anybody ever checked it out?
I think, I'm sure what Stephen would say is, we put it down as needed, you know, and, you know, maybe, you know, last year, it seems like, you know, north and south of us got hit real bad, and we didn't get much. Now, this year, maybe we got, I mean, our roads were, were packed ice.
Right.
From, from about halfway through the winter.
So were the other towns, but they don't have the ice or the sand problem that we've got.
I'll bet there's as many people that were happy we had that sand as there are here.
Yeah, but not right now.
No, not now.
Well, what are they doing, what are, what are they doing that we're not doing?
It, it all depends on the salt-sand mixture. Sorry, I'm right here. All depends on the salt-sand mixture that is used. Salt costs about seventy dollars a ton, sand costs about ten dollars a ton. So it's a, it's a budgetary item that we look at. The state puts down one hundred percent salt, the city looks at a ninety-ten split, ninety percent sand, ten percent salt, to try to get our quantities to last us throughout the winter. So that would be the difference. We use ninety-ten, I don't know what other communities use, but I do know that Mindot uses one hundred percent salt.
Can't we check, can't we check on these other communities and see what their percentage is and go by that?
You know, I've been to some of these other communities, and you could see they use more salt because the cars are coated with salt, but that's pretty tough on, on your car too, especially in the winter when they're hard to wash, so anything's a trade-off. But we'll, I mean, we can take it under advisement, and we'll check and see what other cities do. Thank you. Anybody else? Nobody else? All right, we will keep on number, there are no awards and recognitions, although we did start, I think Bloody, Poppy Day is gonna be May twenty-third, but we, I got mine today, and they're, we have them upstairs, so you can support your, your veterans by buying a poppy. Now, under number five is motion for the consent agenda. Need a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Number six, under public hearings. Public hearing to consider a request by Pacelli Catholic School for the vacation of property located at Third Avenue Northwest between Fourth Street and Fifth Street Northwest. Okay, now Stephen, why don't you give us, and this is not whether we're gonna do it or not, it's just, explain, please.
Sure, I'll give you some background on, on the street vacation related to Third Avenue Northwest. This, this project has been in the works, things have been brought to council different times throughout the past multiple years regarding safety of Third Avenue and different requests from, in, in this case, the request came from Pacelli and Saint A's Schools for the review of the vacation of Third Avenue Northwest from Fourth Street to Fifth Street. When, when putting this memo together for the council, I looked at some pros and cons for eliminating this roadway. Some of the positives for the city would be elimination of the roadway pavement, maintenance, and repair during the spring and winter. There's a lot of shadow shed by the Pacelli School, which causes some snow removal, ice buildup, different things like that, issues. We have that in other areas of town as well, so this isn't the only spot, but that is something to take into consideration. We would eliminate the need to upgrade existing streetlights. We have some street lighting there on Third Avenue that is in need of repair. I have gotten some quotes, actually, I believe it was last summer, to repair some of the streetlights in this segment of roadway. That cost was ten to twenty thousand dollars, depending on the extent of repair that we chose to do at that time. We've delayed that work because of these pending items related to the vacation. So the work has not been completed, but it's something that is out there. Also, the opportunity to eliminate the signal light at Third Avenue and possibility of reconfiguring a new signal light at Fourth Avenue. I have some traffic counts listed there for you, and this would be a viable option to relocate that signal light to Fourth Avenue, which is a more heavily-used roadway, would provide another opportunity for vehicles to get out on the avenues. I know, I would anticipate right now that there are probably public that, that use Third Avenue just because the signal light is there to get access out to Fourth Street. They find it easier to, to get access, so some of that traffic would then be, would be routed to Fourth Avenue for, for use of the signal in that possible new location. Some impacts to the city would be, some cons would be impacted traffic to other areas, other roadways throughout that neighborhood, to both businesses and residential properties that, that utilize Third Avenue for their access. It would create a three-block-long stretch without any avenues connecting to Fourth Street, which is very similar to what we have on the opposite side of the road with the high school. We have no side roadways connections from Oakland to Third Avenue. In this case, on the west side, it would be from First Avenue to Fourth Avenue with no roadway connections. And then the, a negative would also be eliminating that signal light. It's currently functioning well the way it is. That's not to say that, you know, next week it, it could quit on us, but right now it's working fine. And in order to reconstruct a new signal light at the Fourth Avenue intersection, I would estimate that would be a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars. It's a unique interchange with the offset interchange, there need to be a little, couple more signal light heads added. We probably would look at making it a little more decorative because of its area. We wouldn't wanna put a, one of our new galvanized streetlights right out in front of Saint A's Church. We would try to look at doing a little more of a decorative streetlight in that area, so that would increase those costs a little bit. I talked about, I mentioned the traffic volumes on these roadways, and Fourth Street Northwest has approximately seven to nine thousand vehicles per day. Fourth Avenue going west of Fourth Street has three thousand vehicles per day, and Fourth Avenue going east has four thousand six hundred and fifty. Third Avenue, where the signal light currently is, Third Avenue going west has thirteen hundred vehicles per day, and Third Avenue coming east has eight hundred and seventy. So Third Avenue has considerably less traffic than Fourth Avenue at this time. This, as I mentioned earlier, this has been looked at before by previous councils, and back in two thousand and five, a presentation was done to the council, and at that time, they recommended closing Third Avenue between the hours of seven AM and three PM. The closing would occur only on school days, and then the, the cost of barricading that roadway and doing that closure was up to the, the schools themselves, Pacelli and Saint A's. So that is something that was looked at in two thousand and five, and I would estimate that there were other plans looked at both before and, and since then. When a roadway is vacated, it is, half of the roadway is vacated to each property owner on each side. In this case, we have the same property owner on both sides of the roadway, but we would look at maintaining easements over the existing utility infrastructure. And I've put together a couple of cost estimates. If, if half of the roadway from Fourth Street going west, if, if that first half of the roadway were be, were be to eliminated, I would estimate it would be six to eight thousand dollars to remove that concrete pavement. We would then have to remove the signal light and put in sidewalk across Third Avenue. Those costs would be estimated at about ten thousand dollars, and then I previously talked about the cost for a new signal at Fourth Avenue. So taking all of those things into consideration, along with the fire department in, in reviewing this previously, had requested some access to, to all sides of the building, so taking that into consideration as well to make sure they're able to have access for fire protection. And so that is all I have regarding backup for the council.
Council, do you have anything to add? Now, tonight we're just pushing this forward. This is not, you know, it's just appointing the, the commissioners. I believe we have people in the audience that would like to address the council. Randy, why don't you come up, give us your name, your address?
Hi, Randy Kramer, two oh five, Twenty-Fourth Street Northwest, with the, on behalf of the Pacelli Foundation. And so I think Steve did a great job kind of outlining the project. We can flip to the monitor. And we can see, there we go. This is a map of the area, and we just, just a couple of quick comments about the overall scope of the project. Where you can see the Third Avenue Northwest is the area that, that once, that we're attempting to vacate, Fourth Street going north, and I think you can understand the rest. The, I guess, first of all, to outline what our intention is, is to, once that entire area is vacated, is to take the east half of the block and turn it into green space because that would allow more, more room for kids at school, no traffic, a lot more of a pleasing, more aesthetic visual as anybody going north and south on a, on a north-south, the main artery going north and south in Austin. So everything on the east half of the block would become green space, and as Steve Lang noted, the sidewalk running north and south. Two of the major considerations here, obviously, or several of them, obviously, we don't wanna decrease any of the parking capacity for Saint Augustine's Church. We sure don't wanna decrease that at all, so that is a major focus on this. When it comes to the cost factor of this decision, was all pretty much outlined, and also I would point out that the cost savings of not having to replace the traffic lights, not having to replace the streetlights, and I think that engineers can decide, you know, they can make the best decision about whether that intersection to the north needs to be lights or signs. We think that having this street closed will be easier, provide for a better traffic flow when you have a lot of heavy congested traffic there. So for instance, on a Sunday morning, when church lets out, it gets traffic away from the center. It, you know, traffic will either go north on Fifth Street, over to Fourth Avenue, east or west, or they'll go south down towards Oakland. So we think it eliminates a lot of the traffic snarls that'll just let traffic get out of there faster. To talk more about the safety aspect of this, I'd invite Jim Hamburg, Pacelli President, to say a few words.
Thank you, Randy. Mayor Steen, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to present this case before you. My name is Jim Hamburg. I live at Saint Edwards Catholic Church. I'm the president of Pacelli Catholic School. The first point I would like to make is safety. We have three hundred and thirty students, and we're growing, and the majority of them are young. If you look at the campus here, we have on one side the gymnasium, the auditorium, and the music rooms. On the other side, we have the cafeteria, we have the church, and we have Jennings Hall. So basically, all of our students, all three hundred and thirty, including the little ones in daycare, go back and forth across the street throughout the day. I think that for the safety of the children, we need to create a campus. Secondly, I'd like to address the intersection. With all due respect to the engineers who designed that many years ago, that might possibly be the worst and most dangerous intersection in the city. I know it's the only one where you have to take a right turn and a left turn to go straight. And that's whether you're coming from the east or, if you're coming from the east or you're coming from the west. You have to take a right and a left, either way, to go straight. I think that that intersection has had so many close calls in my short time, I really honestly believe a T-intersection would be safer, generate smoother traffic. The current condition has had so many close calls, it's not worth numbering. I would think we don't need to wait until there's a tragedy to realize that this is not an easy section for pedestrians or for drivers. The third thing, point I'd like to make is that the national trend for all schools is to create a campus for two reasons. Number one is safety, and number two is security. I would have to applaud the council because you have shown that vision, consistent if not ahead of the national trend, in your redesign of Ellis, IJ Holton, Austin High School, and even Riverland Community College. And I would suggest or submit that Pacelli should be the next school on the list to create a campus for both the safety of the children and the security of everyone there. The fourth point is that to accomplish this vacation while accomplishing a lot of goods for both the city and for the community, in the long run and in the short run, it will save the city money because it will be our responsibility to maintain thereafter, and some of the immediate things that are on tap, as Mr. Lang indicated, would no longer have to be done at the city's expense. So I again wanna thank you for the opportunity to present these four points to you. I think safety is still the utmost important, but I would also ask you to take into consideration that intersection, the national trend, and the wonderful development of school campuses in the city of Austin, and finally, that the cost burden to the city is extremely low, especially when you consider forever and ever. And with that, thinking of my own forever and ever, it's my privilege to introduce Father Jim Stefis. He is the pastor of Saint Augustine's and Saint Edwards. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Steen and City Council, thank you for this opportunity to present to you. This project to vacate Third Avenue would allow us to create a more welcoming campus layout. Part of the mission of the Catholic Church is always to educate and form our children, and in the same way, the Catholic School, Pacelli Catholic School in this instance, is to embrace the Catholic identity in all areas of education. So the current major buildings with the church, our two school buildings on opposite sides of the street, would present a holistic approach to the education, use of our school buildings and the church building as well for that mission. Creating a campus would help facilitate and enhance that mission. This mission would also, I believe, benefit the greater community. Anywhere that Pacelli Catholic School is enhanced, it benefits the greater community because our community needs strong educational systems. And if we enhance Pacelli Catholic School, it only enhances our public school system as well, and our city needs both. It encourages and promotes people to move to this city, to be a greater part of the Austin community, to retain residency, and the quality of life improves with our educational systems for the long run. It's a benefit to our community when we benefit one segment, particularly Pacelli and Austin, or Saint Augustine's at this point. Secondly, our intention is to provide that safe and secure play area for our young students, and also to have a more meditative, reflective area for parishioners and the greater Austin community. Concept drawing.
It's sideways for us.
There we go.
Is that good? I'm not good with technology. This concept was drawn up at our hundredth anniversary in August. It is mainly a concept drawing, but it gives us some visual. It's not close to be in a final rendering. This would retain adequate parking for our churches and our office, maintain emergency vehicle access while establishing that safe and secure playground area for the kids and the reflective, meditative space for the community. We are attempting to change the present space. That looks like that to the one that I just showed you. To summarize, we're asking to have the city vacate Third Avenue between Fourth and Fifth Street. We feel it provides a benefit for all. We feel it provides a benefit for all, the parish, the school, and the greater Austin community. We have letters of approval from both the Pachelli Catholic Schools trustees and the parish trustees. Mayor Steen, appreciate your endorsement in the Herald, and also the endorsement of the Herald itself. We're excited to move forward with this project. It's a wonderful vision. I think that can really enhance the greater Austin community and our city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Father. Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to address this issue?
I'm over.
Gary? I know who you are, but there might be one person in the audience that doesn't, so give us.
Gary Ellingson, I live at 1700 Second Street Southwest. My concern isn't for or against, I just have a lot of questions before we get into something, because something always comes up when you get into a venture like this that's not planned for, always. My first concern is what utilities are in the ground. I know some run from St. A's over there, back and forth. Are they going to be clipped? We're going to have to take it out? If they have trouble, are we going to be responsible for repairing this, whatever they have to tear up? Second thing is fire. I'm sure the fire chief wants to be able to get at a fire as quick as possible. When the staple was struck many years ago, so it was ease of access for them to get in there, and they saved the church from burning to the ground. The other thing, I'm concerned about safety of the kids, too. Are we creating something that's going to put more traffic over on Fourth Street and cause more people going that way from wherever? And the other thing is for ambulance services to get there. Several years ago, the church spent over $350,000 to put that south entrance on the church because of the aging group of people that go to St. A's. The funerals were too much, carrying up and down the front steps, and that's the other reason we built that. I've heard from one funeral home that they were concerned about what's going to happen in here with all this, because the parishioners don't know anything about what's going on, they haven't been made apprised of it. And the financial end of it. I spent 37 years on the finance council, spent 17 years as a trustee, and I know how the system works. And those are my concerns, and we answer those, and we get that straight before we get into a project, and say, well, gee, we didn't plan for that. I guess you are. The people of St. A's are taxed dearly, just to operate what we have now. And I don't think they're, they're going to be very happy to be taxed more. It's already been in the paper and the news that the $3 million is going to go off for the school, not for infrastructure. Well, that takes care of that. That pushes it all onto St. A's. Where's that dividing line going to be? I think we need to chit-chat with the folks at the church on that one. And if you will look, none of the streets line up on Fourth until you get up to where you turn, where the drive, Beer Riot used to be. That's the only one that lines up with it. So, are we going to change everything along there now to straighten them out? That's just the way it is, you know, and you have to. There's been one incident that we can recall, of a child being injured up there on an accident, and that was because a person, from what I was told, didn't scrape the windows off and came around a corner, got hit by a car. I can relate to that. Happened to me out in front of Rogers Jewelry Store one morning. Girl come around the corner, didn't stop stop sign, and hit me up on the hood of the car. So, I understand all these concerns, and my tenure with the Sheriff's Department dealt a lot with injured and injured kids. Reconsider everything, please consider everything. I'm sure Steve will take that all into consideration before we jump into a project, that, before all avenues have been cleared and checked. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Anybody else? Dick. Former council member, Dick Paschal. Dick, what's your address?
I'm not here to cause trouble, Dick Paschal.
Probably causing trouble, Dick.
Well, I've always been in trouble. Eight fifteen Tenth Avenue Southwest. I go along with Gary on a lot of the things he stated, plus there's a few things that I am concerned with. If they permanently close all Third Street there, I believe also it's going to cause problems. They'll be cutting off two entrances into the church parking lot, which we need. They will only have one entrance left, and that's on the west side, next to St. A. The street, if they cut it off, as Gary says, who's going to maintain it? What, if they get the snow deal, how is that going to be off, so it's not going to be full of snow for going back and forth traffic between schools? I feel myself that if they want to block it off, as Steve had mentioned in part of his, put the barricades up from, say, whatever it is, eight o'clock to four, or seven till three, or whatever it is, and it would serve its purpose. If you have extra activities going on at the school, where do they park the buses? You're going to have the, parking lot at the church is going to be filled up with cars, plus your buses are going to have to have someplace to park. That's a problem. A lot of your deals are going to. I know that the intersection is not the best intersection, but they do have the three-way, the stop signs there, and I've never really seen that much problem with going from Third, Third Street to Third Street in, because you've got the signal lights, and people are pretty good. Yes, there's going to be some that are going to be in a hurry, and you're going to have to watch yourself. That's at any stop sign. But my feelings are that if they want to protect it, block it off temporarily during the school time, leave it opened up after hours and through the weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen, why don't you go through the process now, what, just what's going to happen and how this proceeds, if it is pushed through tonight, not pushed, if we advance it?
Most recent vacations, the, the city has not been responsible for any of the costs. They've been project-related. Ones I can think about would be like the Justice Center, when Third Avenue Northeast was vacated. The removal of the pavement and everything related to that was associated with the Justice Center development. Another more recent one would be Sixth Avenue Southeast, when that roadway was vacated as part of the Holton School project. That project encumbered the costs of removing that roadway, so that was not a, a city cost. With this one, this will, if, if approved tonight to move forward, the commissioners will be set, and they will review the, the vacation and the roadway elimination, and determine if there is a value to one property owner or the other by removing that roadway. That'll be determined by the three commissioners from each ward. After that determination is made, we will then bring that back to the council for review and final approval at that time.
Okay. Sir, did you want to, ma'am, do you want to address this?
I'm Eddie Ripley, and I live at 306 Sixth Street Northwest.
I think you called me, didn't you?
Excuse me?
I think you called me, didn't you?
Yes, and I'm sorry for calling with that early in the morning.
Oh, that's okay. I need to get up by 10 o'clock anyway.
Anyway, I'm just a bit concerned about who's going to pick up the tab. We're talking 100 and, 2,000, between 150 and 200,000 dollars to move a street light, $68,000 for this, and something for that. We are a senior citizen community, and not all of us have a golden parachute to stash away money in. And we, most of us are just living from trying to keep body and soul together and pay what taxes we do have. And with the talking of building a new utility building, and that's going to go, some of that's going to go in our property tax, and I just don't feel that we should have to bear that burden. We are the citizens who paid to have the street there, and we are the citizens who paid to keep the street there and maintain it. And I, I worked in the schools, in the Catholic school system for 40 years. I started out as a playground supervisor. And there never has been a problem concerning the children crossing the street. The teachers crossed the street with the little ones, and the older kids, they were smart enough to know that if the car's coming, you stay on the sidewalk. I, I don't see where, all of a sudden, this has turned into such a great big problem. And quite frankly, for someone who's just only been here a year, and thinks that he knows everything about Austin, and that is not the only intersection that is a bad one, the one on Fourth Avenue.
I know, well, let's, could we stick to the facts, though, instead of characters?
Anyway, I don't think that they have the right to come here and tell us what we should do about our street. And if they're concerned about the safety of the children, I might, I would like to ask, have you, have you installed sprinkling systems inside the school? And why are the doors to the, to the elementary school, when the weather is warm, on both the north and the south are left open?
Ma'am, ma'am, we have, we have to stick to the issue at hand.
What's the issue? They're talking safety.
Strictly learned.
How is that safety when they leave the doors open to the school, so anybody from the street can walk in? To me, that's not safety.
Right, but that's something you're going to address with.
Not having sprinkling systems inside the school is not, is not safety. So, that, I just had my say, and I just don't think that we should have to bear the brunt of this. And according to the article in the paper, it's like, they give the impression that this is $400,000, some of that is going to be used for this. I don't think so. I think that's all been spent, or it's within marked for something else. So, it is going to fall on us taxpayers, and I don't think that's fair.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for listening.
All we're doing, all we're doing is pushing this forward tonight. We're not making a determination, but this is going to, I see, turn into a big debate.
Are you going to vote on this now?
What we're voting on is whether we're going to appoint commissioner, you know, vacation commissioners to look into it. We're not going to okay the project tonight. Am I, is that right, Stephen?
Should not, should abstain from voting because of affiliation with Pachelli?
Well...
Hi. My name is Deb Embryson, and I live at 502 Fourth Street Northwest, and I'm on the corner of Fourth Avenue and Fourth Street. So, my concern is the impact on Fourth Street, Fifth Street, and Fourth Avenue. I'd like to see a more in-depth traffic study. And I guess one of my questions has been answered, because you're proposing to put a street light in my front yard. So, that's kind of where I'm at. I'd like to see where the traffics and the buses and whatnot's going to happen there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Counsel? Oh, sir, go ahead.
I'm Rick Brown. I live at 407 Fifth Street Northwest, and I use Third Avenue all the time. It's, I mean, the parking is so horrendous right now. By closing that street on a Sunday, I mean, I got cars parking in the end of my driveway, and it's my only access to go downtown without going around the block the other way. Why should I be inconvenienced? I went to St. Augustine's when I was a kid. Can't remember anybody ever getting ran over going across the street. They got crosswalks. If the safety's a concern, put some flashing lights at the crosswalks, or try the street closure. I mean, that was an option that has never been tried, and if safety is such a concern, try it. That's what I have to say, but I'm highly against it.
Thank you. Let's get a little finish up with the citizens' comments, then we'll turn it over. Counsel will have a chance to talk.
I'll be real short, mayor. Charles Mills, 2003 Ninth Street Southwest. I don't live in the area, but from listening to both sides of this and the presentation from Pachelli, it looks to me like the enhancement of the appearance and the, the beauty of the area seems to be the prime concern, probably about three above the safety of the children. No children, as far as I've been able to find out, have ever been hurt at that, on that street. So, I think it's just enhancing the value and the, the pleasure of the people of St. A's.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just want to say that I had received some calls that are opposed to it, partially because of the traffic on Fourth and in their neighborhood, and the additional cars going up and down, and then the parking. So, I would just like to move to, not move it forward to, I'd like to make a motion not to move this forward.
I think we're still talking here.
We're still discussing it, but we'll take your motion, and then...
I have a question. If we were to approve this, could we approve it with a stipulation that no city money would be spent on it, other than the traffic light?
Stephen?
David? You can't make that guarantee. The, the point of it is, it's a vacation under the charter. That is, every construction of a street, removal of a street, vacation of a street may or may not have implications for future, future expense or necessary action. Now or into the future. Mr. Lang talks about a prospective street light on Fourth. There's no guarantee that a, a light will be made or not, put there or not put there. So, I think what you have to understand is whether or not that street is necessary, the highest and best use for the public. We have vacated many streets that, while they have been used by the public, the use that was intended for the vacation took priority in the, in the, in the eyes of the council. That's a policy decision.
Okay. Counsel?
I've got a question for Steve. The numbers for that traffic study, how current are those?
Those are probably 2012 traffic volumes.
Okay. Anybody else on the council?
I, I live a block away. I use the, I turn left at the stoplight all the time, but I don't, I don't personally, I mean, based on the presentations by the Pachelli St. A's, people who have been talking about it, I think they did address the, the emergency vehicle issues and some of the other parking. I am confident that if this were to go through, that they would have good solutions for traffic in and out of the parking lot, rather than just maybe the one driveway that's there now. So, I, keep in mind that this, that any action, whatever the council vote is, that the action is, to study the issue more thoroughly and, and appoint these commissioners is, that's correct, Stephen, yes? So, I personally would like to see a, a stoplight, because turning left is, can be a challenge onto Fourth, but I understand that we're not making those definitive decisions tonight.
Anybody else? Stephen?
I'm certainly, I'm certainly supportive of this project, and from what I've heard in discussions I've been involved with, the, the school and the church have largely been the ones that are saying they're going to fund this through donors and other avenues. I don't think their intention is to put the cost of the vacation and getting the street ripped up on the city. I think it's the schools and the churches' intent that that'll be donor-funded. But again, I, I, I'm a, I'm a Shamrock, I'm a Pachelli graduate. My two kids go there right now. I, I travel that street every day, twice a day, in fact, dropping them off, picking them up. And that intersection has continued to be a hanky intersection that I'm not sure if that person knows I'm coming up, going to take that quick left after I go by Austin High School, or going to continue to go right. To Mr. Ellingson, I appreciate the, the comment, Gary. I know you, as a county commissioner, a former county commissioner, have come up against a lot of issues that you think, well, do you, you debate in your head, do you abstain or, or do you not? You know, to me, I, I think it's a personal issue for each person to wrestle with, but in Austin, Minnesota, the population isn't large enough so that we, that we aren't involved. I think every council person here and every county commissioner is on several different committees and several different boards, and involved in several different entities, and if we had to abstain just for being on those or being involved with, nothing would get done. So, to me, I, I, I am going to vote on this. I am supportive of this, mainly for the safety of the, of the, of the students that travel... travel back and forth every day, also for the aesthetics of the St. Augustine's Church, which is a beautiful structure in Austin, Minnesota. Seems to be that those beautiful things and landmarks kind of go by the wayside. I think to enhance that architecture of that, of that church and, and make that a better-looking campus for safety and security of the, of the students as well is, is just too great to, to pass up on at this time.
Anybody else? Okay, Judy has a motion. Tom, can we get that motion read back?
Motion by Councilmember Enright to not move forward with the vacation.
Now, if we do that, then this is a dead issue, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
Who seconded? Jeff?
Michael.
Michael Jordan. Yeah, Councilmember Jordan, I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
It's a resolution.
It's a resolution. Tom, go ahead.
Motion by Councilmember Enright, seconded by Councilmember Jordan, to not move forward with the vacation. So an aye vote is in favor of not moving forward. Councilmember King?
Nay.
Austin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Bowden?
Nay.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson?
Nay.
Motion passes four-three, Your Honor. There will be no vacation.
Okay, I thank everybody that came to speak to the council. Appreciate your input. What's that?
Explain to what we're getting.
There won't be no vacation.
Be no vacation.
That's, we'll, we'll remain there. Right, so, and Tom, when can this, when can this come up again? I mean, is this...
I suppose under Robert's rules of orders, it could come up almost any time, correct?
Okay.
Mr. Overston?
Yes, there could be a resubmission of a petition to have the, the, the street vacated in the future.
But I would think they'd wait for a different council.
Well, that's up to them. You don't, you wouldn't have to wait for another council.
Okay, thank you. The only, I would like to say also, if there's people here tonight that want to address the council on the logo, that is at our work session. And I think with the amount of things we have on our agenda, that could be a half-hour away, we'll take a break. We're going to do that, the first two items on the works, wait, just a second, Judy. We'll do the first two items in here on the work session, the logo and another one. So we'll take a short break. So if you don't want to sit here for the next half hour, forty-five minutes, you can wander around out there, do whatever you want.
Would you repeat, which, there's a lot of talking back here.
Okay, the victim, it's, it's not going to go for...
Will you be bringing it up again two, three years? Is it going to be one of these things that if it don't pass, we're going to bring it up and bring it up and bring it up till it does?
Nobody can know that right now.
There's no prohibition about bringing up issues that have been decided by the city council in the future. That is, there have been decisions made by councils that have been overturned by other councils, and there have been decisions made by a council that have been overturned by the same council. That's legally permissible. So there's no guarantee, sir.
At this point in time, the road will remain as...
On these issues, that people vote things down, and they keep bringing it up and up, they can't do that. I mean, that's...
Yes, they can, sir.
Until it passes. That seems to happen.
That's, that's up to the council to decide.
Okay.
Okay, we are moving forward. Like I said, if you... Pardon? If you're here for that, for the logo, like I say, we'll take a short recess before we, before we address that. So you don't have to...
Make a note.
Thank you for coming. Okay, our next item of business under petitions and requests are adopting an interim ordinance declaring a one-year moratorium on the use of e-cigarettes or similar products in public places in the city of Austin. Okay? I know we have some people from the Drug Task Force here that would like to address this issue. Gary, would you close that door on your way out? Thank you. Oh, yeah, let's give him a second.
I never dreamed it'd be that much.
Okay, Thor.
Will we read the ordinance, or just...
Pardon? Okay, well, we're a number of...
Seven.
Seven, it's, it's, we're talking about the ordinance. We did, last meeting, we voted on it. I think it was four to three in order of doing the ordinance, but the first reading has to be unanimous. If it stays the same tonight, we will pass the ordinance if nobody changes our vote. But the Drug Task Force is present. I think we've gotten a lot of information since the last me, I've been, I've been inundated with it since, I mean, you know, but I'm going to leave that up to you and, and the other representatives of the task force.
I'll be first on, on behalf of that, and I appreciate your time, mayor's team and council for hearing again. Again, I'm Thor Burgland, counselor at Austin High School, and I just want to represent, on behalf, I brought this back again to our, our students, and just kind of wanted to be able to talk on behalf of that, and just say, one of the things about the e-cigarettes that puzzles me is the marketing of it, and not only the dangers of the, the stuff that we don't know specifically, the unregulated part, but it's like the norms. And when students get into this thing that the low perception of any kind of use is there, at-risk behavior goes up because it's the unknown. So one of the things I want to inform you, and also on behalf of a couple of students that are here, is, is we've had five or six incidents in the high school with e-cigarettes already, that the students are just unaware that it's in violation of any rule or law. So therefore, one of the things I wanted to bring up the light was just that unknown piece again. And again, I think with regulation, that it'll be known and the messaging will be out there, and the marketing can kind of cease towards the students, but when you see it firsthand, that it's affecting students' lives in the sense of violations or misconduct, if you will, at school, then they're affected in their lives. So it's not just the unknown use, but it's also like the unknown possession, the unknown possession of it has caused harm in our school too. So I just wanted to say that quickly, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Thor.
Thank you, ma'am and counsel. My name is Bonnie Reeds, and my address is 701 Northwest 22nd Street. And it's nice to be back in council chambers, but it's also nice to be on this side of the podium, so. We've heard from Thor, some of the reasons why our Austin-area Drug Task Force is here asking you to pass the two ordinances, declaring a one-year moratorium on the use of e-cigarettes, hookahs, and similar products in public places in Austin. I am here to express my opinion on how important it is to make the decision locally and not wait for the state or federal governments to enact legislation. We have a great example of the effectiveness of passing an ordinance locally, watching other cities follow suit, and then the state eventually taking action. In 2004, our Drug Task Force brought before the council an ordinance regulating the sale of pseudoephedrine, which was an ingredient necessary to make methamphetamine. It was very controversial. The head lobbyist for the Retailers Association came to Austin to testify against it. Our council at that time voted seven-oh for the ordinance, and it virtually stopped the manufacture of meth in our city. This ordinance spread to other cities and eventually to the state, and it passed a similar law. Though we are not the first city in Minnesota to pass a moratorium on the use of e-cigarettes, hookahs, and similar products, we are one of the first, and as more and more cities pass ordinances, it will eventually, hopefully, be passed at the state and federal levels. We have the luxury at the local level to be able to pass laws one at a time with one decision to be made. At the state and federal levels, it becomes more difficult to pass legislation with often several items being tacked on to the initial law. Austin has always been a progressive city, doing what it can to make our community a healthy, safe place to live, work, and raise a family. Thank you for your consideration of passing these two ordinances.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to address the council on this? Yes, ma'am.
I am Deborah Scary, Tobacco Treatment Specialist at Austin Medical Center, Mayo Clinic. I just kind of wanted to say a few things again about the safety. Patients are very surprised when I tell them the possible side effects, harmful effects of the e-cigarettes, because the advertising leads them to believe they are harmless and good for you. There have been some incidences. There was a gentleman in Florida where it blew up in his face while he was puffing on it, and knocked out his teeth and half his tongue, and started the room on fire. Another little boy was sent to the ER with second and third degree burns from e-cigarette charging in the front seat, and it blew back like a bottle rocket into his car seat and burned him. The nicotine refill bottles are not childproof, and there was a two-and-a-half-year-old girl from Israel that died from drinking the nicotine poisoning from the, from the refill bottle because of the flavors. They got the bubble gum, they got the gummy bear. Even just spilling the nicotine onto your skin, it can result in poisoning because it absorbs right into your skin. The tobacco companies are now making them, so you know that they do not care about the safety of their customers because over half the people die from tobacco-related disease as it is. And I'm just going to leave you with a quote. This is from Dr. Stanton Glantz, Director for the Center for Tobacco Control Research and Education at the University of California. If you are around somebody who is using e-cigarettes, you are breathing an aerosol of exhaled nicotine, ultrafine particles, volatile organic compounds, and other toxins. So I don't think it'd be any different than somebody sitting beside you in the restaurant if they're spraying mosquito spray in the air. I don't think anybody would want to put up with that either. And I would like to introduce Vicki. She, if you remember from the last meeting I told you about, a patient's wife that was having some asthma attacks from the secondhand vapor. So I thought I would let her tell you that because it means more from, coming from her than it does just from me. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Vicki Kiefer, and I wanted to tell you about my experience with e-cigarettes. My husband quit smoking last August by switching to e-cigarettes. I have a history of asthma, and when I've been exposed to the vapor, I've had pretty significant asthma attacks, such to the point where even when I use a rescue inhaler, I still have difficulty breathing for up to fifteen to twenty minutes after that. I've had attacks when I've entered a room like fifteen minutes after he's done puffing on it. My last exposure, he took one puff in the kitchen, and it set me off, and I was down in bed for twenty minutes trying to catch my breath. And I just can't feel that I'm the only asthmatic that has difficulty when they're exposed to the vapor.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish, wished to address the council on this? Counsel? Yes. Why don't we, you want to just go through with everybody, because I think everybody's going to have a say, or Judy, did you want to start? Do you want, I mean, do you have anything to say?
I just want to add that I still feel that it is a personal responsibility and that there is no conclusive evidence, just a lot of people that are against smoking or anything else. And I feel that people are responsible and need to be responsible. Whether the child drank that or not, it'd be no different than drinking some bleach from under the sink or whatever. There just is no conclusive evidence, and so I just don't believe it's necessary at this time.
Stephen?
I support the moratorium.
Okay.
I guess, I appreciate everybody coming to testify, but I think a lot of this testimony does not speak to the ordinance or the moratorium. This moratorium will just affect where the product is going to be used. It doesn't affect the sale of the product. It doesn't affect the marketing of the product or the manufacture of the product. The product is still going to be available to purchase by legal adults as defined by law. So, I mean, I don't want kids to use this any more than anybody else, but it's still going to be out there, the kids are going to be able to get, get at it if they want it. And by us just saying that it can't be used in certain places, it doesn't change any of the arguments that I have heard in favor of this. I am not in favor of kids using it, but I am not in favor of us saying where people can use legal products by their own choosing. Thank you.
Okay, I don't vote, but I'm in favor of it. I think, I was even reading on an Elger, El, the Arab website, that the news, and even they were talking against it, and as far as where you can sell it. The same thing is true with the pseudoephedrine. You couldn't sell it over the counter. It didn't stop people from buying it, it stopped people from selling, you know, stealing it, and it basically eliminated. I was on the Drug Task Force at the time as, as an officer, and it virtually eliminated labs in our city for a number of years. Janet?
I think there is compelling evidence that says it's a health risk. We were hearing it from, from the professionals that have come here to testify. The CDC has issued things, I've got one in front of me, that's dated April 3rd, 2014, new CDC study, finds dramatic increase in e-cigarette-related calls to poison centers. The toxic, we don't know, so we don't really know exactly what's in it, I'll grant you that. Some people think it's less harmful than others, but the point of a one-year moratorium is to give us time to, for studies that, that give us more facts. Also, a one-year moratorium hopefully gives the FDA time to do something more than they have, and there are some things in progress allegedly, in terms of regulation of the sale of this, how it's marketed. I think our, my belief that the importance of these moratoriums are that we are, we're taking a break. It's like the yellow caution light of saying it's better to proceed with caution and find out what, what is actually in it. What am I breathing? And if I'm sitting next to somebody at a restaurant or in a park or wherever, I, I'm, you're talking, certainly, we don't want kids to do it, but we're not just talking about children, we're talking about the public. We're saying it's a public safety issue. And for those of you who are saying that there's, we don't know, well, gee, look at some of the strong, strong evidence from health professionals that say, be worried. So that's my, my, I'm obviously very much in favor of it, but, and just one more last note, the University of Minnesota, there was a news story on ABC Six News, four University of Minnesota campuses will soon be tobacco-free, including Rochester, Twin Cities, Duluth, and Crookston campuses, starting July 1st, tobacco products and e-cigarettes will be banned on those campuses. And, and then there was a UMR, you know, official commenting on that. And it's, and U of M is catching up with the decisions about banning these e-cigarettes on campuses. There's just, there is compelling evidence that the health risks are there.
Thank you. Michael?
I think that's great that they are banning the tobacco on the campuses. I, I personally did not like the tobacco on the campus that I went to.
I'm talking about e-cigarettes.
Oh, yeah, e-cigarettes, that's great. I, that's, that's wonderful. And I believe that they should do that if that's what they want to do. I don't believe that we, as a government, have the right to tell a private entity whether or not they can utilize them on their private, or on their, well...
They can use them on their...
In a business, in a business, in a, in their public business, but in a business they own, the property they own, that as a government, we should not tell them that they cannot use it on their business property.
Thank you. Roger. As soon as Jeremy makes his comment, I'd like to make the motion to approve it. Okay, Jeremy?
I don't think I have a comment.
Okay. I'll make the motion that we move ahead and approve the ordinance. Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Most?
Nay.
Motion by Councilmember Bowden, seconded by Councilmember Anderson, to approve the motion for preparation of the ordinance, so an aye vote is in favor of such. Councilmember King?
Aye.
Austin?
Nay.
Jordan?
Nay.
Bowden?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Nay.
Councilmember Large Anderson?
Aye.
Motion passes four-three, Your Honor.
B, motion for adoption and publication of the ordinance, need, so move. Sir, second?
Second.
Tom?
Motion by Councilmember King, seconded by Councilmember Large Anderson for adoption and publication of the ordinance, so an aye vote is in favor of such. Councilmember King?
Aye.
Austin?
Nay.
Jordan?
Nay.
Bowden?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
I guess we just need the motion.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posh?
Nay.
Tom?
Mister Dankert? Motion by Councilmember Large Anderson, seconded by Councilmember Carolyn to adopt and publish the ordinance, so an aye vote is in favor of such. Councilmember King?
Aye.
Austin?
Nay.
Jordal?
Nay.
Barton?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Nay.
Councilmember Large Anderson?
Aye.
Ordinance passes four-three, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number eight is a series of, what's an ordinance, adopting an interim ordinance declaring a one-year moratorium on the use of hookahs or similar products in public places in the city of Austin. I think it's basically the same arguments. David, did you, I got your name on here, did you want to comment on it?
Again, hookahs are used to smoke tobacco products and they of course would be subject to the Clean Indoor Act, but also they're used to smoke different herbs. And again, there are studies that show that the smoking of those herbs does produce elements that can be harmful to your health. So again, the purpose is to regulate that and at least at an interim basis so that further consideration and studies can be made. There have been CDC studies on it and research is progressing on that matter.
Okay. Council? I guess we just need the motion.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posh?
Nay.
Tom? Mister Dankert?
Motion by Councilmember Large Anderson, seconded by Councilmember Carolyn to adopt and publish the ordinance, so an aye vote is in favor of such. Councilmember King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Jordal?
Nay.
Barton?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson?
Aye.
Ordinance passes six-one, Your Honor. Again, these last ordinances, this was a second reading, so they needed a majority vote, so it's approved.
This does pass.
Correct.
All right, thank you. I think the people that came to speak to us on this issue tonight appreciate your input. Now we move to number nine, it's adopting an ordinance to provide for a definition of a service animal. Now council talked about this at the last work session, Mr. Holbestein, I guess you can give us a overview for the people that are here.
Yes, Your Honor. It came to my attention in that of the Police Department, that our current ordinance that defined what animals could run at large and what animals had to be under leash or under control, did not correctly define what a service animal is and we're all familiar with service animals assisting people with various types of disabilities. The state statute was amended to provide that a service animal means a service animal is defined by the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act. So in order to be consistent with state law, we are proposing to amend the ordinance that the service animal be defined in the same manner as in state law.
Okay. And I think the big, you know, everybody knows of seeing eye dog as a service animal, I think, but what we're finding out are, there's a lot of different areas that these animals are used for and we want to be compliant and make sure that we treat them right. Okay, council, if you have nothing, I mean, does anyone want to add anything? Kind of a no-brainer, we need a motion for preparation of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posh? B is a motion for adoption and publication of the ordinance.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mister Dankert?
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Jordal?
Aye.
Barton?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson?
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven-zero, Your Honor. This is the first reading of it, so it does pass with unanimous vote.
All right, thank you. Item number 10 is a motion authorizing the, an increase in the budget for the Animal Control Facility by $10,000. Mister Lang, did you want to?
Sure. As we talked about this at the last work session, we described where we're at with the project, we have bid and have results back from contractors on the total costs, detailed kind of the pending items remaining and looks like based on the bids, we are about $10,000 short of our budget and that is where the request comes from for the additional $10,000.
Thank you. Council, anyone add anything?
I'll move that we move ahead and accept the $10,000 addition.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posh? Thank you. Eleven is a motion authorizing the Police Department purchase three additional in-squad cameras with funding coming from the Police Department forfeiture Fund. Talked about this at our last work session, if there's nothing new, Mr. Chief Krieger?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posh? Number 12 is a motion adopting the 2014 council goals. Mister Dankert?
Within your packet is the tally and the summary of the council goals as voted by the eight elected officials for 2014. There are 22 items that were brought forward from the different elected officials for council to in essence vote on for 2014. We actually ended up instead of 10, 11 because of tiebreakers and those 11 items, if approved by council tonight, are what staff will start to work on in the immediate future to get those goals accomplished for you as the council members.
Need a motion. Before we move on that, I would just like to say, I'm as guilty as the rest of us on this, I feel that we kind of, because of when we addressed this issue in various meetings, it kind of got pushed through and didn't get the discussion that I felt it was, since these were ideas that came from us on the council, I thought we should have probably taken the time to discuss them more as a group and maybe lobby for them a little bit, but as they are, I can live with them, but I just wanted to say next time maybe we should do ourselves a little bit better. Thank you.
Anybody else?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posh? Number 13 is a resolution approving organization values, vision statement, and code of conduct documents. So moved the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Mister Dankert?
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Jordal?
Aye.
Barton?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, Your Honor.
All right, we're going to try and keep this moving because we're going to be here till nine o'clock if we don't and I think we've tackled most of our tough items already. 13 is a reso, oh, I think we did 13. 14 is a resolution accepting February donation for the Austin Public Library. So moved the resolution. Second. Mister Dankert?
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Jordal?
Aye.
Barton?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 16 is a resolution receiving feasibility report and calling for a public. Oh, we skipped 15. We skipped 15, oh, Fire Department, accepting donations to the Fire Department. So moved the resolution. Second. Mister Dankert?
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Jordal?
Aye.
Barton?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 16 is a resolution receiving feasibility report and calling for a public hearing on April 21, 2014 for Project 1B-13 Turtle Creek 1 Sanitary Sewer Project, 31st Street Northwest, Oakland Avenue, Tuceter Avenue. Stephen?
Yes, this project is located like you described there, adjacent to 31st Street Northwest. Some of the key items related to this project would be the extension of sanitary sewer service to an area that was recently annexed to the city of Austin. The project would begin at 2nd Avenue and 27th Drive Northwest, this is where our existing system is located. We would then extend the sewer westwardly underneath I-90 to service this area. It would be mainly constructed with gravity sewer main and low-pressure systems as needed to serve 28 parcels. Gravity service lines would be extended to the property line and the low-pressure grinder systems would be installed adjacent to the home. An estimated cost for the sanitary sewer on this project is $700,000 and it would be either paid for through assessment bonds or our wastewater treatment plant fund. And this project is feasible and we would request setting a public hearing for April 21, 2014.
If you don't have any questions or comments, we need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Second. Mister Dankert?
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Jordal?
Aye.
Barton?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 17 is a resolution adopting an assessment policy for Turtle Creek 1. Mister Lang?
For this area, we need to develop an assessment policy and some of those key points would be, 100% of the project costs will be assessed to the benefiting property owners. All property will be assigned a residential equivalent unit. Parcels identified as imminent public health threat will have up to 30 days upon completion of the project to hook up to the new system. Parcels with non-compliant private septic systems will have until July 1, 2015 to make that connection. And owners with compliant systems will have up to five years from completion of the project with an optional three-year extension based on a certificate of compliance for their existing system. And those existing systems, the compliance of those will be determined by the Moore County Environmental Services Department or the MPCA.
Council, questions?
So if they have compliant systems, they don't pay the assessment until at which time they hook up, correct?
No, the assessment would start on day one, but their costs that they need to pay to extend the service back to their property, they can wait with that for up to five or even eight years if they get the three-year extension.
Thank you.
Anybody else? If not, we need a, where we, resolution. So moved.
Second.
Mister Dankert?
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Jordal?
Aye.
Barton?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, Your Honor.
18 is a motion approving a revised event application from the March of Dimes Southeast Minnesota chapter for the annual March of Dimes walk on April 12, 2014. Be self-explanatory, we need the motions. So moved. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Posh? 19 is a resolution approving the Animal Control Facility purchase decree.
Again, as we talked about at the last work session, the next step in the process would be approving the property acquisition for the site. An agreement has been developed for the purchase of Lot 2 of Wonderlic Edition in the amount of $20,000 for the Animal Control Building Site.
Questions? Dammit?
So moved.
We need, okay, is there a second? Mister Dankert? Tom?
Who got the second, Your Honor? Jeff Austin. Councilmember King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Jordal?
Aye.
Barton?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 20 is a resolution accepting donation to Parks and Recreation Department. We do this every month, but you just need a resolution. So moved. Second. Mister Dankert?
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Jordal?
Aye.
Barton?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 21 is a motion setting a public hearing for April 21, 2014 for variance request from Rotting House Real Estate LLC in regard to property located at 910 West Oakland Avenue. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Just setting a public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Posh? 22 is a motion approving an off-street parking appeal submitted by the Hormel Foundation, Leaning Tree LLC, and Austin Port Authority for the Hormel Institute Expansion Project located at 16th Avenue Northeast and 8th Street Northeast. Mister Hoynes?
Mayor and council, if I can, with these two separate actions that are related to the Hormel Institute, if I could just explain both of them together and then we can open up for questions and it'll be necessary to take two separate actions on it. As you know, city staff has been working on the expansion project for the Hormel Institute. If you look on the monitor, I'd like to just review briefly with you some of the components of that expansion project. If you look at the red or pink outlined areas, that's currently the place for the off-street parking for the institute. What is being planned is there will be a reconfigured off-street parking lot in the northeast corner. The expansion of the campus will be in the existing off-street parking lot and there will also be a redevelopment of a off-street parking facility in the southeast part of the property. Another future expansion would involve a lecture hall in the northwest corner of the facility along with additional off-street parking stalls. Relating to what is being requested here, there are proposed 263 stalls altogether. The staff out at the Hormel Institute actually conducted an analysis of their, what are the occupancies of the existing conditions? conducted an analysis of their, what are the occupancies of the existing conditions, and i- if you look at that, in the most severe conditions as far as the use of the off-street parking, it was approximately 77% of those stalls were being utilized. So, excuse me, just a minute here. But if you look at off-street parking use for offices, there's factors for both the office and the research, one stall per every 300 square feet, and for research use, one stall per every 500. In your backup material, there's outlines of what the design standards are, and again, in going through those calculations, number of stalls required are 263. If you take the 77.6% of those stalls, you would be at 204 stalls. If you look at the total, as far as what is being proposed, there would be 217 stalls. Back to the monitor, if, after developed, if the council should approve this off-street parking appeal, there is additional property available where that lot could be expanded and meet the current off-street parking requirements. That summarizes the off-street parking.
Council?
No, he's going to...
Oh.
Back to the monitor, with tree mitigation, for this type of development, they are allowed to remove 47.5% of the trees on the site. If you look at our ordinance, those trees that are actually considered for removal would range anywhere from having trunks anywhere from 12 inches in diameter to 24 inches in diameter. If you look at the report that was originally submitted, I think there was approximately 103 trees that the consulting firm showed that were going to be removed, but there was close to, well, 54 of those trees did not even qualify for tree removal. They're actually either overgrown trees or shrubbery that are, they're all on fence lines, and they shouldn't even be considered for the project. So initially, the, the report showed that 88% of the trees would be removed. After doing a recount, recount of the trees that are in place, that was reduced to 71.6%. If you look at what is being proposed for new plantings for trees, there's been proposed 55 trees, 25 shrubberies, and 750 flower plantings. If you look at the replacement schedule in 11.71, most of the ratios for these tree replacements are a one-to-one racial. There are some of them that are actually two-to-one. What is going to have to happen here, the planning commission recommended approving the tree mitigation plan, but at some point, there's either going to have to be a forestry plan approved, or also a cash settlement to plant trees and somewhere else within the community. The trees, if you can, they're shown here along 8th Street Northeast. There's trees along the north portion of the campus. There are some coniferous trees in the northeast or northwest portion of the site. Those are actually planned to be relocated to another location on the property. This is the southeast parking lot where there is one parcel that has not been acquired, but there will be a buffer that would be provided around that residential property. There's a stormwater retention pond, another buffer that would be along the east side of the off-street parking lot. All this surface drainage from the lot would go to the retention pond, and there's also a, a lighting plan for both the southeast lot and the northwest lot that would all be provided with downward directional lighting to not adversely affect the neighboring properties.
Is that it?
That's it.
Council, do you have anything? If not, we need a motion for 22.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. We need a motion for 23, the tree mitigation plan.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. Now we come to 24, it's a resolution approving Engineering, Construction, Administration, and Inspection Services for the domestic digester rehabilitation at the wastewater treatment plant. Mr. Lang?
We recently approved a project for upgrades to the domestic digesters at the wastewater treatment plant. This would now be for construction administration and inspection at a cost not to exceed $331,000. This work would be performed by Short Elliott Hendrickson. They were the same firm that we worked with on the design of the project, and I would recommend, well, first of all, this would be funded 100% through our wastewater treatment plant fund, and I would request authorization to enter into a contract with SEH for these services.
Council, any questions, comments? If there are none, we need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Bouton.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
We remove 25, so we'll go to 26, it's a series of motions granting the Planning and Zoning Department the power to contract for the removal of refuse and junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at the following locations. A, 1212 Fifth Avenue Northwest and Alta Property, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. B, 1312 10th Avenue Northwest, HPMN4 LLC Property, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. C is 1203 11th Avenue Northwest, the Denison Property, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. D is 400 Sixth Place Northwest, Shards of Glass LLC Property, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. E is 1011 7th Street Northwest and Martinez Property, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. F is 1008 12th Street Northwest, the White Property, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. G is 614 through 616 and 616, 10th Drive Southeast, the Classic Property, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. H is 404 16th Street Southeast, the Burgland Property, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. And finally, I is 907 9th Avenue Southwest, the Winkles Property. We need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. And I'll come to 27, it's a resolution approving, approving a resolution, a resolution declaring the property, this is houses that were going to be, Craig, why don't you explain the next, there's 27 through 32?
These are actually properties located in the city that city staff has been trying to get the housing code violation resolved. It's actually a combination of where the structures either need to be removed, or there is an option to make repairs on those structures. I think the timeframe in, once the council should approve the action for classifying it as hazardous, the timeframe ranges anywhere, I think, from 30 to 60 days. So, once the council acts, the property owner still has 30 to 60 days to remedy the problem.
But these properties will either be fixed, or we'll fix them, or take them down, then is that correct?
One or the other, yes.
Council, you have anything? That's 27 through 32. 27 is a resolution approving a resolution declaring the property located at 1012 Second Avenue Northeast, a hazardous structure, we need a resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Bouton.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
28, approving a resolution declaring the property located at 801 38th Avenue Northeast, a hazardous structure, the Rocheck Property, we need a resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Bouton.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 29 is a resolution approving, a resolution declaring the property located at 1310 8th Street Northeast, a hazardous structure, RPD Properties LLC Property, we need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second? Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Bouton.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 30, approving a resolution declaring the property located at 801 15th Street Northeast, a hazardous structure, the Running Property. We need a resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Bouton.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 31, approving a resolution declaring the property located at 701 9th Street Southeast, a hazardous structure, Wells Federal Bank Property. We need a resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Bouton.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
And finally, 32, approving a resolution declaring the property located at 304 Second Avenue Southwest, a hazardous structure, the Hoye Property, we need a resolution.
So moved.
Second.
All, uh, Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Bouton.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
And finally, with our addition, 33 is a resolution authorizing employees within